For Selectmen being in order for November ninth. I have all three Selectmen present. I have the Town Administrator present. Be courting for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Lee Martell. Thank you, Lee. And I'd like to make a shout out to Linda Nickerson, who's behind the scenes, who always uploads the videos to YouTube on behalf of the citizens, for the citizens. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes first. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, as amended.
I'll second Justin's motion.
Any discussion on those? I thought they were very minimal changes.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Dave, two, please. And one more, wish you please.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of October twenty-six.
I'll second that. Discussion, I just want to open up these to the non-happy seal. Any further discussion? No. Carry on, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to start off by opening public comment. I'm going to start with the back row, back row. I think some of you gentlemen are on the agenda, and sir, this is public comment. If you're not on the agenda, you can talk, if something to say to the board, we can open up a public comment this time. No? Okay, absolutely aye.
He's calling you sir. So this is Brian Clark.
Oh, okay.
One of the members of the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
This is your Select Board, Mike, Dave, and Justin.
Thing is, I retract that because you're on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
No, just for housekeeping, what we do is part of the meeting, we open up the public comment in the beginning and at the end of the meeting. So if the public has any concerns or wants to bring up an issue, we, there's opportunity for them to do so.
Nobody comes to our meetings. I'm not used to this.
Well, the thing is, we found out technically, we don't have, it can be completely non-public in the sense that we don't have to allow it. But thing is, usually by allowing public input, we make better decisions. Okay, so I'm going to bring you back to the board. We'll go right to the town business, and we'll go with the Board of Assessors, twenty twenty-four budget.
Awesome. You have that in front of you?
You do.
Okay. Our goal, what we're looking to do on the top, Secretary, this year, our budget was a thousand forty-six, with a three percent COLA, that's a thousand seventy-seven. For Jacques, myself, and Nicole, it was twenty-two oh-two this year, with a three percent, be twenty-two sixty-eight. MRI, who does all of our pickups, Scott and his crew, we had assessed it, or bid for sixteen thousand on our budget for that. And are there's in yellow too, Lean?
Yeah, and the actual is ten, one ninety-one, but we have five thousand six hundred eighty-five outstanding.
Which could be still executed before the end of the year.
It will be.
Yeah, so with that fifty-six eighty-five projected, what's still owed and what's left to be picked up by the end of the year, that's where you'll end up at the bottom of that, at thirty-seven thousand one oh-nine.
Okay.
So we're, we're at thirty-six nine eighty-five, so we're just over, just under a hundred and something there, so we're right on budget. And what we're looking to project on that is, we've got our bid in, MRI's, Scott's hourly wage is going to go up. Five dollar, what's he, five dollars?
Ten dollars.
Yeah, ten dollars an hour to eighty-five dollars an hour. And, and the other, who's the other guy that?
Sean May, but it could be anybody.
Could be anybody. They're, they're going up five dollars an hour.
Okay.
So, and our average pickups are around two hundred dollars, two hundred a year, so eighty dollars staff hours. So we added the two, Lean did, she helps us with this, we figured it's going to cost us another four thousand with the increase of the two hourly, which isn't a lot, but the number of hours they put in here. And the pickups that we have, so we're projecting another four thousand, so we added that to our budget, and we come up with a forty-one thousand two oh-six.
Okay.
For next year with, so we're going from sixteen thousand from MRI up to twenty with the four thousand that we're thinking the hours it's going to cost us.
That's the biggest, that's the biggest item, yeah?
Yep, so, and I don't know, our track record over the years is pretty close to what, what we have to spend. We, we're right there.
Okay.
And I don't know who makes the adjustment on the percentage for COLA. I don't know if that's across the board, you guys do, or?
We, we look at pay raises and COLA raises across the board.
Okay.
And sometimes individually, depending on circumstances. So that was our recommendation that we put out this year.
Okay, because we're not, you know, obviously, we don't do this for the money, so we didn't put that in.
I can relate.
Yeah, yes, you can.
That Board of Assessors line is split by three people.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right, yes, yep. Not counting Janice, because Janice is the Secretary, so there's actually four of us total.
Very good.
Yep.
Gentlemen, questions first?
The only thing, Lean, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Their budget increases, that basically because of the new, number of new homes?
No, remember two years ago, we had gotten billed for two years, and we went over budget on the ten thousand. And now that they've gotten back, us back on track, we're averaging about sixteen grand a year for their annual pickups.
And now we're bumping it to twenty, so.
Right, because we have.
Because of the hourly increase of the.
So in two years, it's doubled? From ten to twenty thousand?
No, if you look at.
Twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-four, you get a ten thousand dollar increase in that wire.
Correct. This ten thousand was under budgeted. It should have been at least at fifteen grand, and we went over on that budget.
You went over that year?
Yeah.
I think if we had twenty twenty-one, it would probably be closer to that.
And I did add the Board of Assessors legal in the next category below his budget. He doesn't, they don't keep it in their budget, but they're, it's grouped with these Selectmen's legal accounts. And we had a request from George San Souci to, we're looking to settle in April and September this year, and his contract that he provided to the board, says that there will be, over fifty towns will participate in the shared costs. So he asked that the towns increase their budget, ten thousand dollars, cover those legal expenses.
It's anticipated that this will be the last year we're dealing with utilities?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's what we're being promised. It's enough. I mean, we're looking at seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen through twenty twenty-two is what we're still working with fifty towns with. The nice thing with him is he's always included us with other towns, and we really share that cost basis with other towns.
Gotcha.
And we always made out.
I just want to, since you're assessing, I just want to point out, our assessing value will go up for utilities. This came out in this week, about last week was announced, that the, the power company that we endorse as the Board of Selectmen, they're going to come to Dunbar. So the substations are going to be improved, and the wire is going to be improved. That means it'll increase our, a little bit, our tax base of, I think it's over a million dollars. And that's going to be, so we just have to keep an eye on that as they make the improvements. So it's, it's going to be a good thing for the town.
Yep.
Because with no industry, we'd have a little bit of power increase.
And those values are picked up by George San Souci.
Yeah. He's phenomenal. He, he has to educate the judges. He goes back that far from the very beginning. He, he knows all the history of that, so you can't try to pull one over him, because he knows. A lot of them, he wrote. So I mean, it's great to have him backing a town, for sure. And he's, anytime he comes in, we've done Zoom, he wasn't feeling good, we did Zoom meetings, anytime we need him, he's there.
Good.
Really, really good.
Glad to hear that. But this, this may be a good impact for us.
Exactly.
As we go forward.
And like, and a plug for MRI, they've been phenomenal for us. I've been on this assessor board, I think, over twenty years now. And we've gone through a few, which have been great, but MRI is very consistent. We have the same people, you know, evaluating the house, de- depreciate, just.
Depreciation.
Yeah, same, same, you know, it's not this guy looking at, well, I think it depreciated this, and then you have a separate guy looking at with this, well, he depreciates it. It's the same crew. They do a phenomenal job. We're hoping that they'll put a bid in for twenty twenty-five to do a revale. They did twenty twenty, phenomenal job. So it, it works really well to have them. They're a good crew, they do good by the town. And Lean works very well with them, with the software we use for Vision, so it's really been good.
I, I've accessed, accessed, accessed Vision. It seems user-friendly.
Well, they, they like it, so that's important.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I don't know the questions.
Oh, good, thank you. Thank you.
Can we just touch on the Warren article?
Yes.
Next category.
Yep. Typically, we put in requests, money from the Warren article to do our revale, because the state wants us to do it every five years. We put the money in every year.
Correct.
And now we're looking at to do another fifteen, and that's project us into twenty twenty-four up through to twenty twenty-nine. So if we put this in every year, it stays consistent with the town, and then we're ready to go when it comes time to do it.
So it's not a big blip in the.
Exactly. Well, now we need fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And typically, I think we've come under.
We've been fortunate the last few years, but the town is growing. The last capital improvement plan that they were depositing into the Capital Reserve was averaged fourteen thousand. This year, we just went through an adoption for the new Capital Reserve, which takes us through twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. And they, they did increase it one thousand dollars because costs increased, and then population's gone up over three hundred, which means more than homes, more than pickups. So those will be considered in the bid process. And so once we expend at the end of twenty twenty-four, we'll have to start increasing the balance again. We don't want to deplete it down to zero. We want, we'll be able to tell this coming October, this next October, November, if all the funds are gone because of the bids that we do receive. But then we'll have, start, may, that may have to increase, depending on how we see those bids come in, in October.
Right.
And, and I think with MRI doing it and staying consistent with the pickups and the valuation, when we do a revale, we don't have, we have very few people come in wanting, you know, what's going on with my taxes, or what's going on with my property.
Gotcha.
Been really steady, so that, that saves us too without having abatements and going through that process.
And the other thing, too, that the board should know, this board, because they deal with it all the time, the, Scott Marsh reviews the equalization ratio, because it's a requirement by the state that we provide them with reports, data, supporting documentation for the annual pickups, the sales, whether they're valid sales. And right now, for twenty twenty-three, we're at sixty-three percent of the market value. So their goal in a revale is to bring that sixty-three percent up to a hundred. So there's a big spread there that the D R A does not like to see. If it drops too low, they may mandate a full-blown rate, a full-blown.
There was a difference between market rate and what we're taxing them at.
Right.
Exactly, with that change, yeah.
And what's happening is, a house may be worth three hundred thousand on paper, but it's selling for six hundred thousand dollars, and that's skewing our ratio. So we have to get the values across the town.
What do they have, what do they feel is acceptable? What ratio? I mean, sixty-three is kind of low.
It's very low. They don't want it less than ten. Is it ten percent that the D R A?
Above or below?
And so they have.
So one ten or ninety?
The revale in October should bring that into correction.
That's why they're looking at us doing it every five years.
Right, okay.
So we can get caught up. I mean, a lot of the big towns, the cities, Tocque, they're doing it quarterly.
In Tocque, and what is a statistical revale? I mean, there's another term for a partial revale.
It's statistical.
Yeah, we don't have to do pictures and the whole, well, we did that in two thousand, and that's really good data. So now we do statistical every five years.
Based upon market.
Yep, exactly.
But if they audit us and find that the, the statistical is not bringing us in accurate information when they test our cards, then they may have to, you know, force us to go back.
We've been pretty good with that. If they can't find enough sales in this town, they'll take a town that's similar to ours and use those numbers too. Like I said, MRI is really good at that, so.
Okay, yeah. I just want to get a feeling.
No, no, yeah, it's important.
David? Okay, I think we're good.
One other thing, just, it's kind of information where we'd like to go and see what you, your thoughts are on it? Because I don't really want to go in front of the town unless a Selectman or. It's to do with our current use.
Yes.
So I'm just kind of giving that to you, so you can look at it and kind of maybe get back to us. Right now, we're going to have, we're having more and more homes taken out of, I mean, land taken out of current use that's disqualified, because they start building on it. They subdivide it from the eight acres or whatever, from ten down, and that takes out a current use. Right now, we, we give fifty percent of that to conservation. We've got a, right now, they have a hundred and thirty-three thousand. We, we owe them another ninety thousand with land that's come out of current use. That brings them up to two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Lean sent, gave me some numbers. Over the length of time that we voted to have half of our current use go into conservation, and I'm not against conservation. I'm just trying to get another way that we can increase or decrease our property taxes. We've over seven hundred thousand we've put into that account. So if current use, the penalty's twenty grand, we get to keep ten, and the other ten goes to current conservation, out of our budget.
Do we have the history of that a little bit? Was changed, did you just read it out for a minute?
I, I don't have it with me here, but it was in nineteen.
Seventy-three, it looks like the source here, down the plug. Or is that just the source of the?
I'm not sure with those dates, or I just looked.
Oh, no, that's just the RSA. I do have the information on my, my desk. I want to, to get more.
I'm getting bits and pieces of the history of it, why it was raised at fifty percent, or was not at fifty percent before. I think the Board of Selectmen raised.
It was in nineteen, I want to say nineteen twenty-nine that we adopted a Conservation Commission, and then with that is the RSA, this RSA, that authorizes the towns to put any sum into the fund to support conservation land.
Can you give us the timeline on the changes made at voting?
I think it was nineteen ninety-eight, and I have it on my desk, that they were looking at the Nasekis land, so they were looking to increase the revenue to help offset.
That was before that, wasn't it?
Prior to that.
Well, they were.
Before that, I know they've done.
I was on the commission at the time, that was in the eighties.
It was in the, then it was seventy-nine. But I do have that information. It's almost one hundred percent. So it gives the history of when it was increased.
You want to email that to us?
And the revenue here that he mentioned is basically from nineteen ninety-eight to current. And in December, we'll be cutting them a check for ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, I have no qualm in finding it, but I think it's maybe it's time we look at the balances and the percentages, maybe, we can look at that.
Just, just something we've been talking about, because we're seeing more and more of the penalties, because people are taking out buildings and stuff. Maybe we could put that in our budget.
I think it's, you have to have a balance of conservation land and, and good use of property. And the thing is, we don't be, we don't have a, have a shadow organization in town, which is money-rich, which is can buy, I have the majority of the property in town in conservation use. I think a good percentage is good, but it doesn't have to be the entire amount. Again, one thing that this board is looking at, I can say publicly that we're looking at pro, any additional properties for, in the future, whether it be for a safety center, a new school, or a new town building. It's hard to find pieces of property which would support any of those activities. And once it goes in conservation, it's almost like it's never, it's like you can't touch it.
Yeah, it's pretty.
And so we're almost in competition with conservation, and they have bigger pockets than we do.
And then with, you know, the amount of being builders, you, you guys already know, the amount that we're given there. Whether we reduce that amount or what, I just, we just wanted your input.
I appreciate, I appreciate your service. But I think we need to look at the history a little bit more and understand a little bit more. Okay, just, okay.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate bringing that point up to us.
Appreciate you, all the work you do for the town.
Well, we try.
Thank you, Brian. Good job.
Okay. So now, then, gentlemen, we have S A U to talk to us.
I have to fill in your face, as I said, as I walk in.
A packet, some books.
So I think everybody, I think everybody knows me, but my name's Owen Harrington. I was the principal at Dunbar Elementary for almost a decade. And I'm the curriculum director for the S A U at this point. Made that switch a year and a half ago. What I wanted to talk to you today about is future-ready schools, which is basically strategic planning. Would you like any hints? I'll get you on. I can go into as much detail as you like, or I can help you get your meeting over with quicker.
Start high level, so at least understanding.
Okay, so future-ready schools, if you look at this handout, that's towards the bottom of your packet. This talks to you about what future-ready schools actually is, and it's a set of gears. If you look at the gears, it has the learner in the middle, and that's always the focus, is learner sense. And this is a handout for school boards, so it kind of goes in like a really high level, thousand-foot view, if you will, ten thousand-foot view, however you want to look at it. It just explains all the gears that go into planning for future-ready. And this is a group called All for Ed. They, they oversee future-ready in their national group. You don't necessarily have to pay anything to work through their gears and so on and so forth, but they're always there for support. And they work with the National Department of Education, in that they're, they're kind of like an advocate for public schools. So that's the group that we went with. Long story short, if you, if you look at slide three, kind of going over the history of this. The Don era, that's Don Gage, he was the curriculum director, he retired in two thousand twenty, June of two thousand twenty. So he started this, he and Dean Cascadine, Dr. Cascadine, and you can kind of see where he was going with it. Shannon was, Shannon Barber was the next curriculum director, and then it came to me a year and a half ago. And the goal right now is just getting all four schools together, kind of on the same page, and making progress. Why I wanted to come to talk to you folks is, one of the, we're focusing on three gears. We're focusing on C I A, which is Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. We're focusing on professional learning, and also community partnerships. And I wanted to talk to you folks about community partnerships. I'm happy to talk about any of the rest of it if you'd like, but just to kind of get the work, what we have for vision and goals for community partnerships, and see if you have had any thoughts. Positive, constructive, any of it's more than welcome. And I'm happy to answer any questions, like I said.
Well, how do we input into it?
I look at you as leaders of the community.
Okay.
I feel like you, you can easily speak to what the community would need from the school, and I think we can speak to what we feel we could benefit from the community. From the school's perspective, you have Clem here as well, school board chair, you can easily speak to that as well.
I have a question for you guys while you're here together. We, we work real hard as a group to try and keep our budget as close to flat as we can for level services. And with us, the different branches, say the highway department needs a truck this year, we kind of lower the other departments down, we take care of the highway department. Fire department needs one in the fall year, the police department, we kind of transfer station, we kind of are able to juggle our funds somewhat, so that they're not all lasting in the same year.
Yep.
And that allows us to keep somewhat of a level budget, to try and keep it, you know, the tax rate as close to the same as possible. And I know you guys have so many items, and your school board does a great job, but so many costs are fixed, that you guys don't really have an opportunity to keep it as level. Are there any long-term solutions that you guys have to try and keep the tax base as even as possible? Because at the rate I see it going up now, a lot of people that live in town may not be able to stay in town, because the taxes are going up. You know, on a three or four hundred thousand dollar house that they worked their whole lives to get to.
Right.
Even all paid off, with the tax rate going up, they might not be able to afford to live there. That, looking at that every year, it's real concerning to me.
Yeah, I would say, you know, this isn't, Owen, Owen is easier as part of the S A U to do this presentation, but.
But these long-term things that we're looking at here have some cost to them, I would imagine.
This is more of a, well, you can speak to what this is, but, you know, you're asking about it.
I looked at the wheel there, and it was a lot of that, it's cost add.
This is more of like a curriculum thing, because, you know, that, that would be some, you know, in that, right, Owen, it's not, this isn't some budgetary impact. It's like a, a guide to how the school, or the S A U would educate, or aim to educate, to make the kids future-ready, to make the schools future-ready. So we have competitive kids coming out, so it's not, this isn't necessarily a budget impact.
Well, when you read down through the circle there, I would just have to read through.
Budget resources. Yeah, I, I mean, it covers, it covers virtually everything.
Robust infrastructure.
Yeah.
Budget resources, community partnerships, data and privacy, you know, uses space. A lot of it doesn't have anything to do with dollarized, but parts of it do, and that's what I was wondering.
Well, Owen can explain. I mean, I, I wouldn't look at this as like a direct impact on tax rate, because that's more personnel, health insurance, you know.
Taxes are somewhat fixed.
You got a twenty percent, you know, you know, guaranteed maximum rate increase this year on health insurance.
Yeah.
Twenty percent. That's crazy.
It's the highest that our business industry has ever seen. He's got a close thirty-year career, and he's been speaking about that a lot. I, I think when, when, what you're saying resonates for me, because I mean, I, I pay taxes too, obviously not in Dunbar, and I pay to the boss. And our tax rate's pretty high, and, and you do sit there, even as an educator, close to thirty years, I look at it and say, am I getting value for my dollar? I, I think I am, but yeah, it's frustrating. I, I guess my answer would be that if you look at the three gears that we're focused on, we're focused on those, because we feel really confident in the other gears. And that's because of the effort that's been put into them in the past. And when you look at, I think the one that I think about the most is robust infrastructure and data and privacy. With that, that's, those are both pretty closely tied to technology. And the robust infrastructure one, the technology director, he has a five-year plan every time, that's, that's what he proposes to the school boards. And he's very, I, he's, he's very hesitant to replace items unless they just absolutely need to be replaced. So he looks at a Chromebook and says, that's got a five-year lifespan. I don't know if a middle schooler is going to get five years out of a Chromebook, but they might, and that's his goal. And, and he, he does that with everything. And I think you can say that with, and when I look at the Dunbar budget, because the beauty of my job now is I don't have a budget. But when I look at the, the Dunbar budget, I think we, we always tried to stay as fiscally conservative as we could, but the unique part of Dunbar is that you have to pay tuition. And that, that fluctuates year after year, could go up, could go down, depending on the size of the classes going in. And I've gone into budget meetings with Dr. Cascadine, where he just looks at me and says, you know, this is all real nice and good, but you're getting nothing, because your, your tuition has gone up so much. And you're going to have a hard time putting, passing anything through the school board, and, and he's right. And, and I, I think that that's more than fair. And the Bo, the Bo School Board, when they presented their last budget, they wanted to, their goal is for a flat budget this year as well. So that directly impacts your tuition. It should keep it lower. Is that a possibility for them? Not with what Clem just talked about, the twenty percent increase in health insurance, but they're going to do the best that they can within their means, because they just had that proposal for a new school. But they're doing the same thing. There's a new elementary school, well, a new renovation to an elementary school going in. All the other budgets are lower now, because they want to make room for that, so it is in, in the front of everybody, everybody's mind as they create their budgets.
The elementary school doesn't affect our tuition.
Correct.
It's only that they crank their budget down to compensate for that within Bo, that they lower the tuition schools, which are the middle school and the high school.
Okay, back to your, your presentation. I see one thing missing. I see just one little sentence in here about families. What if a parent said parental input into this? We hear all this about, you know, on the news, but the thing is, you know, we're leaders, and you have all these teachers and administrators, but where are the parents? I want, they should be integral to any process here.
No, it's a great question. So we'll, we'll send home a home survey, so that they can give input on that. But the other, the other thought that we have is to have a parent night, where they can come in and they can give direct feedback. We're thinking about providing food and some childcare, so we can get some, get some families in there. And just have them go through a quick presentation, and then tell us what they want when their student or their child graduates high school.
You, you know, I almost see, almost like, it's, it's one thing to get people to come in at the developmental stage, it's like pulling teeth. But once you develop something, and then put the, we say, these are the changes that we want to implement.
Oh, yeah, sure, they help.
That's, but that's when you got to be amenable to the flexibility and reach out to parents, because parents are, they're being pulled in ten different directions, from soccer fields to basketball, and.
Oh, yeah, I hear it.
And, yeah, and so the thing is, to have them come up and brainstorm, no, the brainstorm is fine, it's, I don't, the brainstorms can be the administrators and the teachers and all that, but the, the end product of the day has to go into the review of the parents. That, that's just an idea.
So the other thing to look at is the last arrow there, the review of the plan, it's just ongoing.
Okay.
It's a constant review and adaption. It's a constant review and adaption.
I would make sure we put, to include parents.
No, it's in the.
Okay, good, I just, I throw that out there because we're all in this together and the thing is, what you don't wanna be doing is teaching, say, some subject that someone stuck in there because it was their personal pet peeve. And all of a sudden, like, we have like seventy percent of the parents like hate it. And it's not for my kids. And that creates, it creates turmoil.
I'm on the school board where I live too, so I've heard on.
Okay, so you can understand where I'm coming from.
I do.
And I look at that, I say that only as a recommendation.
I appreciate it.
That's all. Okay, any other gentleman, any questions on this?
No, I don't.
Good.
If you wanna take some time to look at it, send me any emails or any suggestions, I appreciate that.
And we're, as a board, we work with the school board, we always have our, I'd kind of up for like property because that school is gonna be, one day they cannot expand it anymore and they're gonna have to find a new spot for it.
As long as Jeff Trexler's around.
But the thing is, but property is becoming a premium in this town. And that's why we're being vigilant.
It's a very different town than it was when I started, it's only been ten years.
Well, I just wanna say thank you for your past fortune and talent. I appreciate working with you as many of you.
Yeah, likewise.
Thank you.
Anytime if you'd like us to come back and have a review.
Okay, thank you. And if you need to put some questions, we're here. I mean, the most we can say, we can't help you, but the thing is, however you ask, and if we can provide help, we will.
I appreciate that.
But we work through our partners on the school board.
Absolutely. So do we have anything else? I know I had this email about the.
You know, on the agenda next.
I am. I didn't realize that I actually made it.
It was just easier, write your email and since you're going to be here.
The, well, which I forgot to include John Trotter, which I guess would probably would have been the best thing to do. I'm glad you included Linda because she's like, hey, here's everybody else that we need to include on this. So we had a question about the proposed calendar school year next year with the, I think it's September tenth is the state primary, which I think is a typically light election day. I didn't know if it was possible to use upstairs and rather than disrupt the cafeteria, not that it matters because we've done it a million times, we do it a million times more, just.
I don't see why not. Linda will probably go over all the numbers, we'll ask her who's typically, she has a count of people that go to those and then we'll make a decision. I know that that building up there, they were talking about the attendance and stuff. And I think that it'll hold fine, the amount of people.
Yeah, but it's more than people, it's the parking situation during the day. It's parking is a major issue.
Well, I don't think you could do like a regular election for it at all, but.
But even logistics of it, moving, the elevator is not usable for equipment. This would take five minutes to get one booth up there, then it has to wait five more minutes to go down, five more minutes to go up. I'd be paying a setup people, not, it's three hours for setup, I'd be paying them nine hours. Just the pure logistics of it.
Sure.
And I, I'm not getting any warm fuzzies, I'm being completely honest.
Yeah, I'm not getting any right now either.
So I share that with you, I had a talk with the town clerk earlier yesterday regarding this. And she has additional major concerns. And we're only election workers, the key person that's gonna have major concerns would be the town moderator.
Yeah, well, that's why we asked. I mean, it's sad, like I said, we don't have, I mean, obviously it'd be nicer if we didn't have it. You don't have to impact it, but it's just a day, so.
By state statute, it's our job to provide the building and the location. But it's, you know, you cannot predict elections. We can go by history, that can be, we'll see which way the wind is blowing, but sometimes it just depends.
No, I know, that's why we didn't say after elections.
But I think on the, I think on the smaller ones, there is some availability for that use of, and I think that, you know.
And that's where I disagree with them. But the thing is, but we'll take another valuation, for sure.
I mean, we talk about carrying those things up and down, but you used to have them up there.
That's our responsibility.
You know, so.
Yeah, well, it was just a question that we wanted to ask, so.
A lot of them days aren't pretty light where people just.
So I think what I'm hearing him say is they're trying to set the schedule for the schools.
Give a deadline?
Like the.
Well, that school's gonna happen on that day or not. So it's whether or not we have to, you know, shut down the cafeteria and do all the kids eating class and crap. Excuse my language, that kind of stuff.
If it's a smaller location, a smaller, can it be, can some of the cafeteria still be utilized if it was broken in half?
I don't think so.
The noise gets too loud?
No, they don't, they don't let, Linda, no, if there's people in the building, that's all she'll allow.
Gotcha, okay.
Which is why we, yeah, I mean, we don't expect it, you know, for presidential election or anything like that, or you know, whatever, off year, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
A primary thing is.
But okay, we look forward to having the town clerk give us input and along with the moderator. And then we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Yeah, this is September twenty twenty-four, so, and then school's happening.
It goes by fast though.
Yeah, it does. But school's happening, and so it was more, I think, we wanted to just, and of course Jeff is the one who caught it because nobody else thinks of stuff like Jeff does, but he said, ask them and see what they think, because it might be nice.
Yep. Okay, so noted, we will take it for action to gather some more input and then give, as soon as we can, give them feedback back to you.
Sure, yeah, it'd be great, appreciate it. Anything else you guys wanna hit me up for, any more questions today?
I just wanna make sure your lawn service is doing okay this year, this is the joint.
I think they were great, you know, I drove past a few times, you know, it wasn't like, I don't know, two or three years ago when.
You had like a hay field out there.
Yeah, I've noticed they've done a pretty good job, done a good job running cleaning up. I think we save the town some money by working together to make that one contract.
Well, yeah, and I think it was also making sure that they were accountable, you know, because I don't, they, they wouldn't cut for us and we'd have to, you know, it was just a mess. And then I remember like three years ago, we had the first day of schools, like, you know.
We did have to call them on some plowing cleanup. But I think we've rectified that a little bit now, so if you see any issues over there at the end of the plowing season, let us know about it, if we need to call.
Sometimes a pal would tape the.
Sure, yeah, of course.
It's in the contract, but it's extra cost, but that's what you expect when you have to call them.
Yeah, yeah, sure, they got a loma seed. I mean, the only place I think that we really have a problem is off the end of the lower parking lot, and nobody cares about that anyway.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's a total.
And this board did extend their contract two years past June.
Yeah, right, because it was going so well.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, there's definitely continuity.
Right.
And the rate didn't really go up much at all.
We cleaned out, I don't know if you noticed, but we cleaned out a lot of dead, dead trees that were close to the building or encroaching on the building. We did some, some of the, primed up those apple trees, we did a long bunch of dead ash trees.
I think they cleaned up some of the gardens too.
Yeah, we tried to get rid of, there's a, above that leach field, there was like a, just a poison ivy, just seen.
How did you get rid of that?
Well, you know, the problem was, I think the guys didn't mow it, it's like, just mow it. Fray it from the get-go, and you're not gonna have a problem with it, but you let it grow on.
Yeah, I think one time they had left a little part undone for the kids for something or other, and then they never mowed after that.
We, I think we, we had a, our borough's, there was a chemical license coming in to spray for it, so.
Yeah.
You gotta get rid of that stuff, it's terrible. Other than that, yeah, as far as building expansion, we're not looking at it yet.
No, but we, but we are, I think, so opportunity may arise, we're looking, always looking for opportunities. And because land is such a premium.
Well, there is, I mean, you talk about that, so one thing that would happen, if you actually found a new place for a safety complex, that land becomes available.
Correct.
You know.
For expansion on the road.
Right, so without, because it would be possible to move in a lot of different areas of that. We just might have to move some leach fields and move some septic tanks or push out the baseball field.
No different than clearing land.
Right, or, I mean, I don't think, you know, I've always said to Jeff, why don't we go up, he's like, and then you need a sprinkler, then you need a, you know, all that other kind of stuff.
But we're always, that's always looking for that.
Yeah. Yeah, like you said, it's a tight.
Yep, and you gotta have a balance between, as I said earlier, the conservation, which is I'm most respectful.
Yeah, I think at Dunbarren, we love green spaces, but you know, they don't wanna have people to the point of hindrance.
Right, it's gonna be a balance. So we'll leave it at that. Well, thank you for coming in.
Hey, yeah, great, thank you for having, anything else?
Nope. Enough easy tonight.
The G. Do you like that G I say? Thank you guys, have a great night.
I appreciate it.
Bye.
See you.
We have number four, we've got our quotes, is that still a partner, so what's going on with that?
Yeah, we'll have to table that, we haven't gotten the third quote back yet.
Okay. Transfer station door repair, automatic opener quote was for one quote for fourteen seventy-five. That's reasonable.
What kind of door is that?
That's, that's a door that was broken with the, with the four- blade.
Oh, okay.
Let's get through here.
And they were adding an automatic opener.
But is that required, how they call it on that one, according to policy?
If it falls within the threshold.
What's the threshold, remind me of the threshold again?
I wanna say it's below seventy-five hundred dollars, that you can get a couple of quotes.
Because that seems, that sounds very reasonable.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I would say, let's make, email to the, to make that happen with, we're in consensus, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, and that will come from the operating budget?
Yes, no, they, the only maintenance line. Oh, and consensus, gentlemen, consensus, yes, okay. And then paving quote for, I'd like to know more about that, and what we're doing down there. As far as paving, gentlemen, any question, I don't have any knowledge on that, me either.
I did have, I did, Woody did bring up mine, some of the areas there that are crumbling. This is the same company that has, that has given Jeff a bid on the roads, has given him a bid to replace some of the paving that's crumbling down there. Now, the size of the area, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
That's gonna require, that's, that's over the threshold, it's gonna require a really bid process, yeah.
Yeah.
So could you, if we do that, could we get some specifications, specifications, excuse me? And so we can prepare a bid request, and I'd probably do that in spring.
I would think so.
And if we get.
So that quote, does it not have specifications in there?
I have the gutters, which is on hold.
Yep, right there.
Yeah, that, that could be a start of it, okay? And, but you're gonna have to use that as a start of it, but you, we have to put it in awards where people can.
They have to come out and visit the site.
Exactly.
And probably talk with Jeff about the layering of, you know, whether they're gonna do a base layer and a finish layer and all that.
Okay.
It's gonna be done like a road, a road equivalent standards.
Yeah, well, it's a parking lot, so.
Exactly, there's a lot of traffic through there.
Yeah.
Okay, this was in here for the doors.
Yep.
And then we just decide if we wanna do it this year or hold off or.
Well, it's getting late in the year, so I'm thinking.
Well, I meant, not this year, I mean, next, next, next year.
Right, I don't mind encumbering a little issue, what do you think?
I don't think we have time. Not to get our P O.
Yeah, there's really no.
And get it all back.
Okay, next year, next year it is, gentlemen?
I, I don't think we have time to just.
All right, no, not by the time we. Well, we can start the groundwork, this, cause the paperwork together, gotta go in, the draft.
I mean, there's a chance of somebody really pushing it to get it done.
Yeah, but it thinks to pave it this time of year, where the.
No, I meant.
The paperwork.
Encumber the funds.
Yeah, encumber the funds if somebody wanted to push it through and stuff, I don't have enough time right now to do it, so.
Okay. Work in progress, we're just good, this, this stopped the process now, we may go into next year.
Okay.
We just gotta keep that, get a dollar figure, which is listed there, we're gonna keep it quiet, but I think is, that'll probably be, we wanna make sure we plus up the maintenance line with at least that amount.
Yeah, or you know, department to push it through too, you know.
Yes, exactly, how bad it is, okay. All right, I'm gonna go write the mailbox, gentlemen, if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, there was a, regarding, we had some confusion regarding the New Hampshire Beautiful Grant. If the transfer station manager was authorized to spend it, I think we gave, it was a mixed messages come from this board, so let's clarify that now. He got a grant of how much, originally three thousand four hundred and nine dollars?
That's correct, yeah.
And the thing is, Woody would like to use some of it to work, to help out with cane crusher installation cost.
I think our previous decision was to let his apartment use the entire amount, right?
No, he said he didn't think he would use the full amount.
Okay.
And you guys basically said that you were in consensus.
Do we have a dollar amount on what he needs?
He's asking, expenses to date is five hundred dollars, and then he's asking, he's got some additional expenses to date.
If I remember right, he's looking to purchase a used open container, have it cut down or modified so that the chute would go directly into it, so it would be less handling, if I recall.
What do you wanna do, do the half of it?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get, I was gonna say, just two thousand dollars, this budget, two thousand dollars for immediate usage for that project. And, okay, it's thirty, four hundred. In fact, why do, why do we even have to hold it at two thousand? We could just give, that's the.
It was up to them.
It was up to them.
Up to that, okay.
I think we're good.
All right.
I think that's kind of what we said the first time.
But we were, at one point, we accepted it to go into the general fund, and it was contradictory, so we contradicted ourselves, not the transfer station, we did it to ourselves.
And for the purpose of auditing and bookkeeping, we have to have the records that the selectmen accepted it, and they've authorized that, or that department to spend it.
So you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion, well, we already accepted, I believe.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to allow the transfer station manager to spend up to three thousand four hundred and nine dollars of the New Hampshire Beautiful Grant, which was already accepted by the board of selectmen for, to assist in the cane crusher installation.
And open top container.
And open top container to support the cane crusher.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's a motion for that he carries, that he can use up to three thousand four hundred and nine dollars.
Okay.
As needed to make that happen. And the confusion was on us, gentlemen.
Yep, the only thing that's a little confusing about us, because we just set that for that one project to be as a balance.
Right.
The money, so.
Right, that's the only pressure we're allowing it to be used on.
Right, for that specific, yeah.
Right, so he's gotta, we just gotta keep, we're obviously about to keep running tally for the project.
It wasn't confusing, we just told him we could use it for his department, and then we set that dollar amount to be max. The balance coming back to us.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so basically he's been deposited into the general fund, and he's authorized through this board to spend up to that much. So if he only spends twenty-eight hundred dollars, then the rest is just gonna be lapsing into the general fund.
Yep, okay.
I will let him know.
All right, town hall edition, we have cooling and heating issues still. Lean, could you talk to me about that?
I got an updated email from Mary yesterday. She has not seen anyone come out to look at the heating and cooling problems they're having in the addition. So I just wanna keep, just keep.
Apparently she puts it on heat and it switches back on back.
I, I was with her when she demonstrated that to me, we worked at that, we tried to switch it off and it just keeps going default. And so it seems like it's locked, she's locked, she's locked out of using that, which is sometimes appropriate. I mean, I know hotels do that. I've had first experiments, hotels locking you out of heating HVAC. But I think it's, it's gonna be a simple solution, and we need to have that serviceman come back, so Lean, that's in your court.
It's already done, I think she's already called him.
Okay, good.
I forwarded it to Jacoin, but as of yesterday, nobody has been out yet.
You know, they called me to see what company it was, so.
Oh, okay, for that.
I imagine Brooks has a sense of, yeah.
And there's also something about the flooring, can that be done, but the repair can be done with the, that's in her area? Can the, can the general contractor?
That would be, you're talking to handyman?
Yes.
So she's got areas on the floor that are splintering, and the splinters are.
Huge.
Six inches long, maybe longer, quarter of an inch wide, so sections of the wood are coming up. And there's no carpet on it, it's travel way. So just have this handyman look at it and see what he can maybe.
How many areas is that? I don't think that's what you can do with it.
You can put a wood.
She keep putting tape and stuff on, somebody goes in there with high yields, but I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's another floor, first floor.
A little bit of wood, wood type putty in there?
I don't know, I think that's just gonna pop out. See what the handyman suggests, but I.
I'm sorry, I'll have to talk to that company that redid the floors upstairs.
They're gonna cut out, repatch, but it's not gonna match.
No, that, we don't need that, I, to me, that's a, that's just a wood patch. And whether it be, even epoxy you could put in there. And epoxy, epoxy would work. I said, use the word epoxy when he looks at that. Wood putty is sometimes soft, but wood putty is not really designed for hard wear, but epoxy can be very durable. And you know, what's nice about epoxy, or when it cures, it's yellow already, so it'll be match patina on the floor. Yeah, I'm, I'm calling it like I said, I know, I know.
It's wood color, not yellow.
What?
It's wood color.
Yeah, that's yellow. Okay, Lean, you guys, okay, mention the word epoxy when you go there.
I did, I put it down.
Thank you. All right, continuing on, we have a recreation goose spruce placement on the conman. We were talking about that a couple weeks ago.
Is that the orange rip in, I see that.
So Don Larson took a liberty of measuring out the maximum width that a goose spruce typically will get. And just for a visual, and so the area, if you've driven by and seen the circular area, that is total location by Don's recommendation. The area is higher than the asphalt, so the road bed is here and the area is up higher. The area is higher than the asphalt, so the road bed is here and the area is up higher. Um, Christine just had concerns as to whether it was too close to the road for salt.
It looked a little close to the road to me, I'm not sure why they'd keep it back, the same as the bandstand?
Yeah.
The other thing is.
I think it's a too close to the road.
Yeah.
I didn't spend time looking at the uh, cisterns right there too.
It's on the other side, near School Street. It's, if, if you're going up that little spur, you go past the bandstand and then it's the cistern.
It is.
Yeah, it's got the big red. Um, it's like, it's not near that location, but.
I thought the cistern was on the lower side.
So, the question from Christine is, do we need to call DigSafe to have?
Oh, for sure.
Yep.
Yes, on the DigSafe?
Yep.
Yeah, it's free, it's law.
And, you think the location is too close to the road?
Yours in those pictures is pretty close.
I think it looks pretty close, but.
Even the other side of the bandstand, oh, I see where the, the.
If, if they moved it to, if, looking at the bandstand, then they just moved it in like two or three feet, then it would, be in line with the bandstand.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well.
In line with the maple tree that's there, and not be in line with the curve, and I think that's, um, he's using the curve, land as a marker to keep it consistent.
Even five feet up close would be beneficial.
Although I think I see what they're doing, if you put it out more even with the bandstand, it pushes it down further, and gets it closer to the big maple. If you look here, if you put it up here on the lawn, the maple's gonna become shrugging.
Right, I'm saying move it right about here, move it out this way, a little bit closer this way.
I think it's only a few feet it should be.
Yeah, it's a little bandstand.
Yeah, a little closer to the bandstand, okay. So, general consensus, move it a little closer to the bandstand, away from the road. Lean, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And call DigSafe.
Right. Did they already get a train, I remember?
I think it's been picked out, but I don't, they're just trying to get it on.
Okay, we have a memo about property repairs.
There's a lot of things going on, it was easier for me to just.
Okay.
Type it in that memo.
Let's, let's, one at a time, wanna talk about it?
I don't have a copy of it, so can you just read it off?
The update is uh, for the gutters, the gutters are a work in progress, we will defer that, uh, that's been tabled for today. We've got a roof replacement, we'll not talk about, we'll pull up the town offices, it could update, um.
No, there was a memo on the top of it.
Ah, okay.
That had the whole list, that's it.
That's it, okay, I'm trying to trip the emails.
Yep.
I was gonna say, what is this?
Nope. Standby, standby, okay, mold, okay, mold has been treated, this is the town hall building. Dehumidifier has been installed, near the sprinkler tanks, which allow drain holes, well, the shortest route with the drain pipe located at the front of the cellhouse stairs. And uh, work in progress with drain cover, because the condition is, covers were still uh, working, were still crumbling, if you remember, gentlemen. So, we made some progress. Greg also noticed a toilet running from the floor above, he said it was running, he found the flap, it was getting stuck. He showed Mary how to fix it, but may, may, didn't mean to replace in the future, just gotta be vigilant on that, if Mary sees it's running, the flap is like a couple bucks.
Yeah.
It's nothing, okay, but I'm glad he found it, give us some kudos for that, that was nice of him. Mold outside the transfer station, um, Greg Miller's gonna treat it, um, he got a mold, two hundred dollars waiting for direction of board, to open up, to open the space above the office.
So there were two things that.
Yeah, that was experience.
There was a, a four foot overhang over the recycling containers that had black.
Right.
Mold, uh, Greg said he could treat that, wash it, power wash it, clean it, for around two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
And then the second part was a little bit more complicated, so if you read his emails, he said that, the last time it leaked, it leaked through a vent pipe that was.
Which he fixed already.
Which he fixed two years ago, cause it was letting water down the side of the dri- he fixed the, shoe, I guess, I guess on the outside.
Collar.
Collar, and then um, it has not leaked since. He did provide the board with some pictures, he did say that it's gonna be a little bit more complicated, and could be um, very costly to open it up, investigate, but from what he provided in pictures, and referred to in his email is that, he doesn't see any sign of, it's the blown-in insulation, none of it is black, moldy, it's all still very light and airy.
I don't think if he doesn't have anything to, to show them that there's any mold up there, I don't think we need to open it.
No.
Yeah, it's, it's just from what you can see on the surface, it looks dry, it's just dusty, the um,
Dusty's good.
Blown-in insulation around the edge does not show any indicator of any type of mold uh, happening there, um. So, he's saying he can do it and get us a quote, and there might be a dollar amount in there, I'm not sure. But it's gonna be a very time consuming and um.
I, I think let it go if there's nothing there.
No, I, I agree.
And that was only a, you know, Woody said, I think we should check that because of the prior leaking, I don't, I think we just make a note that the maintenance guy did check it, didn't see any sign of any mold.
Okay.
Okay, and.
Mold formed outside on vehicles this summer, it was so wet.
Maybe we get to the pictures? I'll, I'll hold it for you, I think that's in on the uh, on the maintenance, Lean.
So, is, you know, is that what?
There's a, oh, capital code for arsenic mitigation, drink, please uh, drink water for employees, mailbox.
Yeah, it's in, should be attached to that, three quote.
When are they writing?
Capital, there's flag signs.
Oh, there's a.
So we have, we were fortunate enough to have a donation of a reverse osmosis for this building, one for the, water bubbler, and the test results that came back were favorable, that they're working. Um, it has come, brought, been brought to.
Did Mary take all the signs off that?
It's all been done, the cleaning through has washed it and removed other water stains as best as they could. The police department has asked me several times about being able to get some kind of filtered water, so that they don't have to buy bottled water, cause it's time consuming, there's a lot of waste with the, the equipment, and it would be nice to have bottled water, or drinkable water, so they can make their coffee with it, and then not be concerned about any arsenic or anything else, so.
It, it is above, it is above the uh, the arsenic is above the, the standard, recommended standards.
Right, so the fire department, police department came in above the standards, and then while I was getting a quote for those two, we now, we already know that the transfer station has the same type of water, so I asked them the quote needs for three reverse osmosis.
Okay.
Drinking water stations, and the, I think the flags are right there.
Right.
Would show.
Now, what do you mean by that, why don't we treat the whole building?
That the water comes from here and the library.
I know, so why don't we treat it all?
We do, we, we are, but by the time it still gets to the other side, there, the arsenic level is, is, oh, so, the water, arsenic is being treated for the bubbler, the source of the bubbler, that was our goal. It's being treated for everything in general, but it's not specific to reducing the level of arsenic.
So, would it be easier to treat in that building for these two buildings? Your building has arsenic here too?
Mm-hmm, and we have a reverse osmosis.
So you don't need anything here?
No, we're good, we can take and fill our coffee pot from this bubbler.
And they have one there?
And they have one, and I asked Mary, is she okay with the use, the amount of use in the library, if she uses the bubbler, if she needs, additional water, and she said, not a problem, so I'm just looking at, the highway garage has one employee, Jeff doesn't recommend any type of water si- system over there because of the septic issues, being higher than the foundation, and then the issues that they've had in the past with contamination, that he would rather for the amount of water that he needs to buy, which might be two cases a year, it would be the way that he wants to go with that.
So how much were the systems like?
All three?
Yeah.
It was, it was just over three thousand dollars.
Oh, you're getting three, you're doing a second one for the fire, second one for the police?
Yeah, and then one for the uh, transfer station.
Can't just treat the water coming into that building?
That's what this would do, is it's a system on a smaller scale like what we have under the sink, and that would be point near sink in the kitchen, that they would be able to use.
So it doesn't do all the water?
Right, because you start filtering all the water, already we're seeing the salt go down in that container very quickly, because it's providing water to three different buildings, and um, they don't recommend the reverse osmosis on the tank and the sauna, they would think it's better, it's better served if you do a point of service.
Point of service is much more economical.
Did you find a dollar?
I didn't find a dollar amount of this.
Capital well?
Capital well.
It's, this is a water test, that's it with the flags, is that it? These are the water tests.
No, which, which color flag, it's not, it's not these.
It's capital well.
Capital well, capital well there. Greg Miller, no capital, I don't have a, a quote.
Can I look at the Greg Miller pictures while you're up to the?
Capital well, I don't have it. For once, I can say I don't have it.
You don't have it, okay. While you're looking at these other, I also.
This was your packet, all state, uh, so the thing is, uh, but it's, a thousand, partially a thousand, a thousand dollars per year.
I'd like to get it for you, so you know they're correcting that.
You know, they're even saying how water. Yeah, you're trying to look at the pictures early, Jeff.
I just don't know if it's five hundred or five thousand dollars, you know, I don't know.
No, it's not five thousand, uh, our role, eh, you know, we're talking about point of source, so things, they want one point of source where they get coffee, drinking water, that's all they need. Instead, you just don't need to treat water like being flushed for hand washing, um, for flushing the toilet, for example, those don't need to be treated, that's a waste of money. So, when you say treat the whole building, you don't wanna do that, because there's a lot of treated water which does not need to be treated. Was it, use, use the two things, use the salt and uh, fills, uh, the filter has a life expectancy.
So everybody was fine with water bottles, and now we got this one taken care of, but the, here now, nobody wants to use a water bottle anymore.
Right, well, now they're even saying water bottles are bad for you now.
Well, I think they're saying like pollution from the water, huh?
Oh, but, but overall, water, this is definitely better than drinking some of the stuff that was untreated. But it's been uh, one of my pet peeves, eh, since I became a selectman, because, first thing I would come into town, I get water, I go to water analysis at my town, my house, the first, the first month I'm here, I'm saying, can't drink water, can't, don't drink the water, get the bottled water quickly, and then I got a quote, and the thing is, I was flab gassed, because I did not budget for a water treatment system, which was, I thought was essential, I'm asking my neighbors, I don't treat the water? Okay, and then all of a sudden, I'm, I'm, every neighbor's getting water treatments after I did. And then uh, what really got me is uh, my landscape, my, my landscape is in front of the house, and I'm all, I'm all like paranoid about the water, and my landscape is drinking out of the hole, she goes, I've been living in the darn bar my entire life, I don't have a problem. Now. I'll leave his name off to protect him.
Did you know Gardner Mills? He died from that.
He did?
From radon.
He had ninety-eight?
He was crossing the street to get his results, and he got hit by a car. Had the highest radon content.
How old was he?
He was like ninety-five.
These are upstairs, these are from the transfer station?
Yeah, there's nothing there.
It was, uh, looks drier than a bone up there.
Dry squid. And the, the outside, the, I mean, the, the, uh, whether it's hopper, this was molded, this, this was. Thank you. Okay, um, three systems, three thousand one hundred eleven dollars.
Yep.
Each?
No total, for three systems.
Nine hundred and something each, plus ninety-five dollars.
I don't know.
I think it's really.
I have a maintenance line.
Let's make a. Make a motion to accept it from Capital Well, on a date eleven four twenty twenty-three, for um, a level four, uh, filter system, um, for the arsenic in the water at three locations. And the total of the bid is thirty-one eleven.
How seconded?
All cabinet styles.
Any discussion on that?
Nope.
Just uh, next year, we gotta make sure we put into our maintenance line, the, the renewal of the.
Service.
Service. Cause it always has a tail, not considered complete.
Yeah, that's nowhere, they got that quick with water bottles.
So when I first started here in two thousand and three, there might have been two police officers, uh, two days open for the library, two people in the building at one time here, and since we've gotten busier, the, every building is occupied a lot, so. This would be a, a good, um.
Well, and it's, I, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that, you know, they have restroom facilities.
Us to be drinking water.
I'm sorry? Okay, moving on. I think that's it on the uh, on the. Yeah, I think that's it, okay, thank you, Lean. Public comment now, what about the public comment?
Nope, still nothing.
Still nothing, okay, okay. Um, I like to take it back to board first, let's start with the town administrator?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, we do have a non-public answer, gentlemen, we have a, uh, not public, and um, alright, um, I just wanna make, make a point that uh, I was asked by the town clerk this week to attend the uh, evaluation demonstration of voting machines, of this particular company, I went to Loudon to see it, I was duly impressed, I, I felt it's something that we as a town should consider. Uh, I mean, we're counting, but when the election ends on some of these nights, we get, it ends at, say, seven o'clock, and we're there to two o'clock in the morning, it doesn't make sense when you can be out of there in forty-five minutes, I thought the security was good, I thought the uh, that they were efficient, they were, had all the bells and whistles that you want when it comes to security, I think it's worthwhile that maybe we have a ad hoc committee of the, uh, chaired by the uh, town clerk, with the town moderator and sub-board, to make, see if we can make a decision for the future. It doesn't have to be this year, but I think we should start putting it on the radar scope.
Not sure it's a big election, I think we should put it on the agenda this year, I think, let's get them to meet with us on our next, one of our next elections.
Bring these, this company?
No, the, 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 the key.
Just bring Linda and um, John Travi.
And see, did you have any price range?
So, it's a, the price range, yeah, I do, it's a, we need one unit, the unit, initial cost is seven thousand dollars, has a five hundred dollar maintenance, yearly maintenance, and every election is five hundred dollars, where they configure the machine for the uh, for the election.
Certify it, right?
Certify, and uh, we have to pay for the papers, forty pound paper, that's the only type of paper, it, it's a recommended size paper, uh, so it's not bleeding through and it doesn't get jammed up in it, but um, it, it was just too easy, uh, and it works really well. What's nice, everyone's concerned about, is it connects to the internet, zero connections to internet, zero wifi, so no one can get into it. Uh, it's secured by.
Do the ballots the state give us pass through?
I'm sorry?
The ballots?
Yeah, well, the thing is, that's a printer, it's, basically, we have to have it printed up, with, with the state, they will, the, these are, this is one of the two companies that the state supports. Um, it was really sweet to see it, I was, and I think is, I was one of those people who was saying, I just love this counting ballots. After seeing this machine in action, it seemed pretty sweet, and so I think it's worth, we take another look, take a look at it.
Well, something to be said for afterward, they're twelve hours, and you got additional people there that have worked all day and voted, and everybody's coming when they're tired.
Yeah.
Doesn't make a lot of sense today.
Question on that, would you, do you have to use it just for state?
No.
You use it, let's say you had, um, we have traditional town meetings, occasionally you have secret ballots or ballots.
You can, you can make it for school, the school board ballot, you can make it for any ballot you want.
Okay.
It's all configured.
Come, you have to reconfigure it, like, so it's five hundred?
It's five hundred dollars a pop.
Okay.
So I don't think we wanna pay five hundred dollars for a regular town meeting.
Okay.
But, it's, it's not just how we wanna use it, but the thing is, I think on major elections, the thing is, what was so sweet, one of the things like, you know, you have write-in votes, and like, people said, it's gonna be real difficult, say, the current president is gonna be a write-in in the Democratic primary. Well, the problem is, you have to put it in, you have to tally that, but you, on this machine, you just put his name in once, and it stays there. you have to put it in, you have to tally that, but you, on this machine, you just put his name in once and it stays there, so it's a click, click, click that's how fast it, it's processed, it's a matter of just a, a mouse click, and, and each vote is processed that way, you don't have to worry about writing, uh, joy, uh, whatever president, whatever name you want every time, uh Donald Duck is popular that day you've got ten people voting for Donald Duck, his name is already in there one time, you have to put it in there one time and it's there.
So how does it see write-in names, it recognizes all the different write?
The thing is, it's, it's a, there's like, there's like little marks, if it marks in a, like in a box for write-in, it automatically flags that. And in other words, it won't be processed, in other words, so let's say you, if you overvote on, if you overvote, it's gonna be kicked out, it won't process, if you have a write-in, and you put a, put an X by the write-in, or fill in the circle, or even fill in just the name and don't even use the X then that, that mark in that box where you write the name in, flags that, flags that ballot, so it's pulled out and put in a separate box.
So every Democratic one, like for the, that would vote for the president, it's not gonna be on the ballot?
It's gonna be flagged.
Gonna be kicked out, huh? Might not help us that much on this.
Well, but it will, it will, because the thing is, I, again, one way you can do it, they were just talking about different ways you can, they were talking about that particular issue, you can get for additional fee, you can get another scanner and just have it scanned in quick, even quicker. But they, they, I think it's worthwhile to.
You only have to come at least those ballots with that write-in.
Correct.
So.
And, and let's say there were like three consent races where they wrote in three write-ins. The software's slow enough, it's gonna pick one, two, and three, and actually won't let you leave until those three pe, those three ones are all checked, checked off. So the software was pretty sweet, and so I, I think it's worthwhile that we, that was only one company, there's two companies that have been recognized by the state, this particular company was a nonprofit company uh uh based in California, the, the, with the exception of the chips, most of the uh components are uh Italy, China, and the United States, and it's all assembled in the United States uh in the south and they just went through live elections in, in a significant number of parishes in Mississippi without, without incident this year. And so it's a, it's something, I, I was a doubting Thomas when I went into the NIVs, I'm I'm not really even putting my arms around it yet, but I think is, I think it's worth discussing.
Take a look at it?
Exactly, okay, um, the other thing I came up with, um, let's see, there was one more thing I had, I'm gonna do one, Dave, you have, I'm gonna leave it to you.
Um, I called again today for the stone quotes for the two buildings here, and one of them's on vacation, so we didn't get that one back, so I'm gonna wait until our next meeting to have the stone bids.
Oh, for the, for the River Rock, yeah.
Yeah, and Jim, um, got a second call from mayor, I'm not sure if I said this at the last meeting, but we found out that the Yale hardware on our town hall buildings, the levers were.
I heard they were recalled.
Defectives, so they're recalled and they're providing all new ones for us.
Okay, that's good.
That was good to hear that, that's gonna be a fix, cause they are a, a heavy duty commercial lock, and they should not be acting like that, so.
That's good to hear.
Maybe I'll be able to get it connected to my um, the iPad that we bought for the town, cause that iPad, it, it what I was told is the iPad would allow, let's say, for example someone didn't have a key, or the password wasn't working, or someone forgot to lock the door, it all can be controlled by the iPad, but I haven't been able to get it to work, so it'd be nice to get it to work.
Yeah, okay, anything else, Dave?
I wanna take those, uh, the question to you.
Okay, um, then at this point, I like to uh make a motion, we're on a non-public, but I would say ninety-one dash alpha, semicolon three, send paragraph two, alpha, I have to request those something.